Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Dempsey will lead us to the pledge.
I would bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful day we've had today. I want to thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon this community. We ask that you look over our first responders and our folks that protect us. We ask that you guide us tonight and have a good meeting. We ask that you give everyone that took their time out of their day to come visit with us this evening, have a safe journey back home this evening. All these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, justic for all.
Thank you. Be seated. I could remind you to please silence your cell phone during the meetings. We have all five commissioners present tonight for a 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the February 17th meeting. If we have no additions or amendments, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do your second. Okay. All in favor? Motion approved. The minutes as submitted passes 5-0. Gentlemen, we've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. If there are no changes or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do your second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion approved. The agenda is submitted. Passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on March 15th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in these same chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll provide you with a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. How many folks have been to a Planning Commission meeting before? Okay, so the ones that have know that we open up the floor during our public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll invite you to come up and give us a three to five-minute opinion on what you think about an issue either for or against that we're hearing tonight. I would ask you, if you have a representative that's going to speak on behalf of your organization tonight, please let them come up first. Then I'll ask other folks to come up as necessary unless you become repetitive. If that's the case, I'll ask you to yield the microphone to someone that has new information that we need to hear. If you have something that you would like to submit on the record that does not have anything to do with one of the items in our public hearing, we have a public comments section at the end of the meeting. Again, raise your hand and we'll call you. I ask you to come up, take three to five minutes to give us whatever information you'd like to have on the record, and we'll go from there. That being said, we'll move right into a piece of unfinished business. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 211107.
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning request at 3850 Camper Club Road from R4 recreational residential to S1 special. This request has been before you, twice before. It was most recently postponed from the December 16th meeting in 2021. This property is located off Camper Club Road, which is a named easement essentially. It has no dedicated right-of-way. It does provide access to several properties off of Mistletoe Road. And again, everything out there is currently zoned R4 with the exception of the existing S1 just to the west, which is for another campground type facility. This is the area of the property. It is largely undeveloped. It is a previous campground site, and there are existing campsites on the property from the previous owner's use. And this is the existing site, and we can see some thinning and clearing has taken place. In staff's estimation, this does not trigger the three-year development moratorium for a truly cleared site. Been some underbrushing and some cleaning up. The applicant did submit some additional photos of the existing site showing the dilapidated buildings from the former campground. And the proposal is a phased development plan. So the first phase would include some continued underbrushing and general maintenance of the property, and then would also include subdivision of the first few lots for single-family residential use. We can see basically, most of the property, all of this, is to be subdivided as single-family residential lots under the R4 development standards, so using the same standards that are in place for all of the surrounding property. And they are requesting that they be able to subdivide the first few of those without paving Camper Club Road. With the Camper Club currently being a named easement, we would typically require that road to be upgraded before it could have access for more than four lots. The road already has more than four lots on it, so in order to subdivide typically, we would require paving of that road first. However, as part of this S1, they are requesting to be able to subdivide the first few lots and to be able to use some of the campsites prior to paving of that road. The first phase would also include shower and laundry facilities for the campground as well as... I believe that's it. All right. Phase two includes construction of the horticultural space at the front of the property. This is a barn with an office and an answerable dwelling space for the farmer as well as the horticultural fields and purchase of some small livestock, chickens and such, to be raised on the property. Also, this phase would also include an additional subdivision of lots as well as the construction of the clubhouse, which would include a commercial kitchen and guest suites, as well as opening of the grab-and-go store, which is intended to be kind of servicing the campground, providing onsite access to ice, charcoal, breakfast items, things like that too, on the property. The clubhouse would provide the commercial kitchen, the guest suites for rental, space for events for up to 75 people, and there is also the intent to develop vacation cabins on this site. It would be up to five cabins that would be rented through the HOA, so they would have control over kind of the rental agreements, who was there, how long, et cetera. Finally, phase three includes the construction of the members pool, which is located here, and a model home. The remaining residential lots would be subdivided at this time and the campground used phased out, so the campground is in interim use until all of the lots are subdivided and sold. So we also have some examples of the proposed development style. The intent is for this to be a fairly low-impact project. The applicant references lead standards both in the narrative and in the proposed covenants for the development and is utilizing some creative stormwater management techniques in utilizing the horticultural space and kind of the agricultural uses on the site as well. The main issue that we had from the previous hearings was the existing road. Again, since it is not currently a public or even a private road, it's a named easement, and it is gravel. The main requirement was that the applicant needed to acquire agreement from the other property owners that the road crosses through, that she would be able to acquire the necessary right-of-way and improve that road and eventually dedicate it to the county as a public road. She has provided those agreements at this point. Now, one of those does have a caveat in it, requesting that the property owner not be held responsible for any damage to the road in the future, so we did want to be clear that that may be the case with the applicant, but that would not apply to the county. And there are standards that do allow the county to hold property owners and users of the road responsible for damages. So the road agreements, though, are in place. The applicant does have the agreements to acquire the right-of-way and improve the road, which was the major stumbling block for this project. The soil survey has also been completed, submitted to the Health Department and reviewed. There may be some tweaks to the layout. They may not get quite as many lots, but in general, their soils are suitable for what they're trying to do. There may be some instances where an engineered septic system may be required, and due to everything being on well and septic, they may end up needing to enlarge some of the lots to meet distance requirements. So that's where they may lose a lot or two, but in general, what they're proposing is acceptable. In terms of future development, this property is in the open space character area. This is very common for properties out near the lake that are mostly owned by the Corps of Engineers. This property, of course, is privately owned. It is not owned by the Corps, so it does have some rights to development as it is. It is zoned R4. It is privately owned. It can be developed to R4 standards, and quite a lot of what is being requested is already allowed under the R4. So the single-family lots, the community pool, community clubhouse, even to an extent the horticultural space, we do allow small-scale agricultural use in R4, are all very much in keeping with what is already allowed in this area. So what the rezoning really does is to allow short-term operation of the campground as the property is developed, to allow kind of the public event rental type use of the clubhouse, and to allow the farm store, the small facility for sale of the agricultural products being produced onsite. The vacation rental use also would fall under the S1, and these types of uses are not uncommon in this area. Campgrounds are very common out near the lake. We have quite a few of them that are S1s, and similarly, a cabin rental operates in a very similar manner, very much a recreational use and not inappropriate out here. So at this point, staff is recommending approval with quite a few conditions. We do have a condition regarding the development of the public areas and the buffering, kind of the standards for development of those areas. We also have conditions regarding the timing of improvement for Camper Club Road, so basically it needs to be complete prior to the certificate of occupancy for the clubhouse, so before kind of that really public and event-type use where there would be heavier traffic on the road potentially. Per the narrative, the first 20 campsites could be used prior to completion of paving, and up to three of the single-family lots could be subdivided. Prior to approval of construction plans, they do need the written agreement from the property owners. Again, we have received copies of this already, so that is a little bit of a CYA kind of condition at this point. Traffic engineering also had conditions regarding the actual development of Camper Club Road, so what requirements it has to meet in order to be developed and dedicated to the county. And then since this project is on both septic system and wells, the Health Department has quite a few conditions for them. The applicant has reviewed all of these, and she's provided written confirmation that she will comply with all of these as the property is developed. And that concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, do you have any questions, staff? I'll reopen the public hearing from two meetings ago. Is the applicant here? The applicant's not here. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Stephen Johnson. Camper Club party that's down, about a half-mile down from the project site. Do have a place on that site, and I polled all the members, and our major concern was even the road prior to opening up to the property. Only, that is our major concern is the road. Now, average width of that road from A to B is approximately 14 feet. By opening up to campers or RVs, their average width is 15 feet wide. Small vehicles, like 5.8, larger vehicles, 5.10 feet, lightweight truck. Anyway, the major concern is safety for families, club members, visitors. Opens up, of course, to the public. Got three blind-sided curbs. Some reason I know that everybody likes to hug the inside of the curb. There's no... We tried to limit, tell all the club members to have a valid speed limit, minimum speed limit or maximum speed limit, and we had that for safety purposes. The whole ball of wax is the fact that we're wanting club for safety, not only just for our club, FMP, nights, they contract individuals out there traveling also. Main concern is safety of the people that travel that road.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Could I ask a question for clarification?
Could we make a motion first and then ask the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions. File RZ 211107, rezoning from R4 to S1 at 3850 Camper Club Road.
Do your second.
Thank you.
Now, sir.
So Ms. Danielle, you're saying that there's nothing that has to be clarified with the Corps with this project?
There is a... So she has been in contact with the Corps, and they were included on our review as well. So their main concern was just nothing from the property can impact the Corps land, so any runoff from the side or anything like that needs to be contained on the property, and the applicant's aware of that. And there is a small section of the road that will cross Corps property, so she'll need an agreement from them prior to beginning construction on the road.
I think they understand that they have a significant amount of underbrushing to do there, and they'll have to deal with the Corps and all that.
So the Corps is fine with what she's proposing on her property. Their only caveat is she cannot obviously cross off of her property and do anything on the Corps land.
And would you bring it up again, what we talked about in the pre-meeting concerning care of that road if something happens with that one person that's on there?
Sure. So we had the one agreement from one of the property owners did have a clause that they did not want to be held responsible for any damages to the road once it's improved and paved. That was a clarification, that while they may have that agreement with the applicant as a private property owner, that would not extend to the county. The county still does have the right to hold that property owner responsible if they do damage the road, once it's dedicated to the county as a public road.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any other questions? All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Motion passes 4-1. All right, gentlemen, we got a little housekeeping here. It seems like we have a meeting that's going to conflict with a little old golf tournament the first week of, first full week of April, so I need a motion to move our April 7th, 2022, meeting to March 31st, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move the April 7th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to March 31st, 2022.
Do your second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to move our meeting to March 31st. Passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, massage operator's license for Leonard Silas.
That's correct. A request for an MOL for Leonard Silas. DBA restorative therapy solutions, doing mobile massage services out of 2/3 East Strip Street over in Harlem. This is used for administrative purposes only. They do have a business license from Harlem as well, and the staff has checked all of their requirements. They meet all of the requirements and staff recommends approval of his massage operator's license.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is not a public hearing. I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve H2B1 massage operator's license.
Do your second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, temporary use authorization, tax map 072 Delta.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a temporary use authorization at 4629 Calais Circle. It's currently zoned R1, single-family residential. This is the location of the property, off Cox Road, kind of back behind the school. This is an older neighborhood. It was actually developed before the current county zoning code, so there are quite a few non-conformities in this neighborhood, including quite a few manufactured homes, as well as the lots themselves generally being below the minimum required now for the R1 zoning district. Again, R1, single-family, typically, we would be looking at roughly one-acre lots, and we would be looking at stick-built or modular homes. We would not ordinarily allow manufactured homes in this district. Again, the existing on-the-ground conditions are very much non-conforming to that requirement. The proposal is to replace the existing manufactured home on the site, and they have discovered that this existing home has some black mold issues, and the owner and the applicant is having some health issues that are certainly not being helped and may actually be... The mold may actually be contributing to the medical conditions that he is having, so they are trying to get rid of this mobile home and replace it with a, at least new to them, manufactured home that would address these health concerns. Now, the temporary use authorization ordinance does include a provision for hardship or burden to the applicant's physical well-being. This certainly can meet that standard with the black mold and with the applicant's health conditions. It also requires that the authorization not be injurious to the neighborhood. Again, this is certainly not an unusual type of building for this area. That is non-conforming to county code, but it is an area where there are quite a few manufactured homes. And finally, it has to have adequate facilities for electrical, water, and sewer. Obviously, with the existing home on the property, all of the utilities are in place. It would be using the same systems. The Health Department has indicated that they would need to have the existing septic tank pumped by the certified pumper and have everything regarding the condition of that tank provided to the Health Department, since they were unable to locate current records of the septic system, so that would need to be addressed, but there are existing systems on the property. Staff's concern with this request is that the applicants do not have a plan for eventual removal of the mobile home. The temporary use authorization is good for one year, and it is intended to be temporary, as the name suggests. So the lack of a exit strategy, so to speak, of how to go about replacing the manufactured home within that one-year timeline with a more permanent structure that would be in compliance with code is a concern and does lead staff to recommend disapproval of this request.
So the non-conforming use, we got a mobile home in a non-conforming position.
Correct.
They want to replace it with a temporary structure with no exit strategy, because our temporary uses are for one year and we can extend it for a year.
Correct.
And they have no plan, if they're going to build a house, or they're just hoping that we'll allow them to put, allow that temporary use to go in perpetuity?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
I understand is if it's non-conforming, if the mobile home is removed, you're not allowed to put another mobile. I understand that works.
And that's correct. So typically, when they remove the manufactured home, they would have to replace it with a modular or a stick-built home and not with another manufactured. So that's why they're requesting the temporary use is to allow them to replace it with another manufactured.
Mediation's not an option.
Yeah. My question, mitigate the old issue?
They were working with an insurance company, I believe, to see if they were going to cover the cost of doing that. I do not know what the outcome of that was. They were exploring that route and hoping to be able to get that covered, to get the existing house livable again, but this was kind of the backup plan. If that did not work out, they wanted to be able to replace the home.
We'd be setting the precedent if we did this, in my opinion.
Did you all discuss with the applicant that without an exit strategy, this was going to be...
Yes, sir.
A difficult thing to, because of the precedent-setting nature of this?
Just mainly because it is temporary, so without them having a strategy, it was going to be a concern.
Okay.
All right. Did we tell them that you should probably postpone it a little bit longer? Come up with an exit strategy and then...
Their concern is mainly a cost, and they said this is really their only viable option from a cost standpoint, which is why they don't have another exit strategy.
Questions? All right. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove of temporary use authorization at 4629 Calais Circle.
Do your second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor to disapprove? Motion to disapprove carries 5-0. All right, we'll move into our public hearing portion of the evening. Mr. Butler, change of conditions. File RZ 220301.
Mr. Chairman, it's a request for a change of conditions at 213 South Old Bel Air Road, currently zoned S1 special, rated private school. This is the location of the property on the west side of South Old Bel Air Road. Again, currently zoned S1, properties to the north is zoned R1, properties to the south is zoned R2, and also the west as well, and also to the... Those are the aerial view of the property and the existing site and the plot of the property. So you guys have seen this property twice in the past, basically two years. In 2020, it came before y'all for a minor revision to increase the enrollment of 200 students, and then back in, I believe it was November, we had a request to add these two buildings here. That was approved with a condition, though. We'll be talking about that condition here in a moment. That condition says that left and right turn lanes will be installed, but they have a priority issue, is the certificate of occupancy for any building on the property. So they're looking to change that condition, basically get rid of it at this point. So moving forward with it, this shows the entrance to the property, kind of giving you an idea of what the current driveway looks like, and also they submitted site plan. Again, this has been approved. The condition as written did allow them to submit the site plan, go through building permitting, but again, they can't get their CO until the turn lanes are completed with the condition itself. So again, they can move forward, but we're going to have to address this other issue as well. So, and again, it shows the driveways as currently designed. Again, if this condition does stay in place, they'll have to have a revised plan to address how to build those turn lanes and also any changes on the property as well that would be caused by that. So in terms of future development, again, you know, as we've seen it before, this is within the neighborhood's character area. This type of use is totally fine to be there. Again, we're not really talking about the zoning. We're talking about the change of conditions tonight. So what was submitted by the applicant was basically a study of different alternatives to kind of how to look at, how you look at this from an engineering standpoint. So again, this is from their consultant, who I believe is here this evening as well. Again, the way that they showed it, you know, with all four of them, three of them, as you can see the first three there, the one from our PAI program, Regulations for Drive and Encroaching Control from GDOT, and then Ash Toes Green Book, sixth edition, did not require a left turn lane. The last one with seventh turn, Ash Toes Green Book, seventh edition required one during the morning peak hour. So we're getting into pretty heavy engineering now, so I'm going to turn this over to our county engineer, Kyle Titus, so he can kind of lead you through a little bit more of the analysis of this.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Good. And Mr. Titus, if you would, please give us your name and home address, just for the record.
Sure. Kyle Titus, 3678 Fox Fireplace, Martinez, Georgia.
Thanks, sir.
So we received the traffic evaluation from the consultant for the Savannah River Academy. We went through their assessment. They provided four different evaluations of how to look at this left turn lane. The first two, we looked at are warrants based on daily left turn volumes, and we had an issue with that, is this is a school, and we all know that heavy traffic patterns aren't throughout the day. Have 100 cars throughout the day, maybe the left turn lane's not warranted, but if you have 100 cars in 15 minutes, like most schools do, morning, school let in, and afternoon school let out, it's a different story. It has different traffic impacts. So we referred to, to the Ash Toe Green Book on this, and it says under "peak hour traffic", "traffic volumes for an interval of time shorter than a day more appropriately reflect the operating conditions that should be used for design. The brief but frequently repeated rush hour periods are significant in this regard. In nearly all cases, a practical and adequate time period is one hour." We're agreeable with that. So alternatives one and two, although are not incorrect or not applicable, we do not believe to this scenario. Alternatives three and four, however, do address the peak hour volumes. Alternative three is not warranted. It is based on the guide for left turn lanes on two-lane highways. And alternative four is also peak hour suggested left turn lane guidelines based on results from benefit-cost evaluations for unsignaled intersections. So we looked at this. We have one that warrants and one that doesn't warrant. As we dug into this deeper, we realized that both of these tables, both of these warrants are pulled out of the Ash Toe Green Book, Chapter 9, which, Chapter 9 specifically addresses intersections. As defined by Chapter 9, an intersection is defined as "the general area where two or more highways join or cross, including the roadway and roadside facilities for traffic movements within the area. Each highway radiating from an intersection and forming part of it is an intersection leg, the most common intersection of which two highways cross one another has four legs." So again, although one of these warrants and one does not warrant, I do not think they're applicable. I think it's more apples than oranges, unfortunately. And kind of to put that into some perspective, you are sitting at an intersection on a two-lane road, getting ready to turn it onto another two-lane road. You make that turn, you have the opportunity to accelerate, and you generally do, to traveling speed on that main line. Sitting at a stop on a two-lane road, and you're taking a left into a parking lot, into a driveway, make the turn, and rarely would you accelerate. You generally slow down as you're entering into the parking lot. So that's the apples and oranges piece I'm trying to convey. So really, the report was inconclusive, in our opinion. We did since go to GDOT. They have specific guidance on school driveways. They have a whole chapter on school driveways and act... They have a whole chapter on school driveways and access. And in GDOT's manual for driveways clearly states that driveway spacing and left turn lane requirements are greater for school facilities than for typical commercial developments because of the size of school buses and peak hour volumes are concentrated with morning school take-in and after-school afternoon dismissal times that coincide with typical peak hour volumes, which were agreeable to. And then further down in the next section, I think we'll we have that up there now. Section ten-point-two-point-three driveway location and design for schools. At a minimum, all school driveways are required to have left turn and right turn deceleration lanes. That's clearly stated in in GDOT's code. Their their manual for driveway. So so considering all that, I know we have a project access improvements guide. And I know that in ISM's report, they looked at this project access improvements guide, and they referred to table one. Further down in our project access improvements guide, I'm not sure if that's up here or not, it says the county may require the addition of a left turn or right turn lane even when the conditions of table one or two are not met if roadway geometry or field conditions indicate the safety of the traveling public would be improved. So based on our current based on the current study and manuals and documents available to us, it would be my recommendation to hold the condition to require the left turn and right turn deceleration lane improvements.
Gentlemen, you have any questions? Thank you. Mr. Stocker, do you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you very much. Do we have any other information coming from the county that we need to get on the record before we open the public hearing?
No, I mean, again, staff recommends disapproval of the request.
Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that's a representative of Savannah River Academy that would like to speak first? Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Adam Nelson, two-four-eight Silver Maple Road, Martinas, Georgia, three oh nine oh seven. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board. I don't say this disingenuously, but I appreciate your service. My office is across the way, so I look longingly into your parking lot and wonder what's going on from Thursday night. So it's certainly good to see the inside. I have been here before. I do want to introduce myself, though. I have not been retained by SRA. A few years ago, they came to me with a zoning issue, and I do think I was in here then. Maybe I was retained, although I don't know if I was ever paid. But after that went well, they asked me to join their board. And I think I don't tell you that to think about us differently, but I do think it's important to know that I I'm here voluntarily. And I'm very happy to be here because of the service, I think, that these folks provide. Now, I want to just highlight a couple of things because this is not a full rezoning. We are confined to this certain condition, and I want to keep our focus there. But I want to reiterate what staff provided. Property was rezoned in February of 2020. That time, taken from 65 enrollees up to 200. So this body said, and the Board of Commissioners said, 200 students were good. That's that's we don't have to do any improvements. I don't know that there were any traffic improvements in the rezoning from 2020, at least not that I'm aware of. Two years later, the school comes.
Were there any traffic studies that were submitted?
That was a a minor revision, so there wasn't anything with that. It did not it did not actually go to BOC. It stopped at this body. So BOC never saw that.
But that time, we have an increase from 65 students to 200. Two years later, the school comes back, and and as was presented in the presentation, it'd like to add some buildings. The the property that's been there, I'm not sure how long it's been there, but it really doesn't meet their needs. And with some of the challenges that the school has had with social distancing over the past couple of years, and just the condition of the property, it makes sense that they would increase the 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 structures there and and make them nicer because the building itself is just a brick building, and it's a great facility, but they certainly want to expand. Now, like I said, there's been a lot of discussion in the past about whether or not this was appropriate, and all we're really looking at here today is traffic. I want to acknowledge that we do have our engineer, Mr. Steve Castle, is here, and he can speak to traffic. Our head of schools, Ms. Mary Beth Burns, will speak to both traffic concerns and some of the costs associated with this project. And we're going to have board, we're going to have members of, excuse me, parents of some of the children that are going to speak as well. But I want to focus back on the condition, and it's also not lost on me that I might be in the wrong forum. We have to start here, but this body already approved this request. When you approved it, you didn't have this condition on there. Staff approved it. The the this body approved it, and when it gets to the Board of Commissioners, they added the condition on the left and the right turn lane. Though I know I may be speaking to people who agreed with us previously, and you may also be in a position, much like staff may be, that the Board of Commissioners, they've changed it for some reason, so why should you overrule it? I'll say this, it's not unusual in Columbia County, considering our size and the amount of development that we have, to have infrastructure improvements associated with rezonings. They get all the time, and I think there's some times where we, as a county, might run afoul of Development Impact Fee Act. I don't think that's in this case. I think I understand the sentiment that when developers improve things or when we make different uses of land, we ought to make sure that the public infrastructure can handle that improvement and that that we don't have as taxpayers a burden that should be addressed by the developer. But what I would suggest to you that the condition provided is not fixing a harm. I I don't want to argue legal arguments before you, but I I think I should read this this code, excuse me, this case to you. It's Crossvee Hall County. And I've cited this case often to to explain why you're allowed to put, as a county, to put conditions. It says generally such conditions will be upheld when they were imposed pursuant to the police power for the protection or benefit of neighbors to ameliorate the efforts of the zoning change. That it's important that it's to ameliorate effects of the zoning change. This condition does not address a harm related to this revision. The enrollment stays the exact same. I heard an awful lot about engineering, and I cannot speak to that. But and and I couldn't tell you if it's right. I couldn't tell you if it's wrong. I will leave that to Mr. Castle. But what I can tell you that was enrollment was 200 in 2020. Enrollment is the same today. When when it came through this body and went to the Board of Commissioners, they can't have any more students there than they did before they came to you. I have had the privilege in in my career of representing a lot of local governments. One adage that I've said both publicly and to my officials is that you have to be consistent in what you do. I think it's important for me, as a representative of SRA, to hold them to the same standard. When they came to me and they said this condition had been put on there, I immediately thought, well, it doesn't make sense because the condition doesn't speak to a problem. But when you guys come back and you in two years from now and you say, hey, we want to increase to 250, I'm not going to stand up here and say not do it. In fact, my vote as a board member is going to be to spend the money to do the traffic improvement because that's when the harm arises. Up until that point, and the only thing that's been informed this board and for the Board of Commissioners, there's no increase in traffic. That the improvement, the the approval that they had in 2020, same approval they've had today. Once again, it's not lost on me that y'all didn't do that. I know the Board of Commissioners did. I've explained to the these parents and and staff here today, this is really a dress rehearsal for the Board of Commissioners. But I do think it's important that this body understand that that our position is not that traffic's a problem. And our position is not that we're shirking our duty to the problems we may cause public infrastructure. Our position is that we're not doing anything different than we were when we first got approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So you're saying there's no problem with traffic there now?
Well, I I would submit to our engineer to speak to that. I didn't want to relay this information yet. I don't know. I may be, I met Ms. King, so I might not be. I am maybe the second closest person in this room to this development. I looked on Google Earth today. I'm point four-two miles from this development. A lot of times in my line of work, I talk about stuff that it's hypothetical, that will impact me. Every single day, I drive in this area. I don't always go that way, but I do on regular occasions.
You go at the rush time in the mornings when school's coming in and out?
Well, I try to get to work before then, but sometimes.
That's my point.
No, I I can't. I can't speak to the the traffic patterns don't exist. And that's exactly why I told them that when they do improve, if they expand their enrollment, they're going to have to do it. But prior to this, with what they've already been approved to do, I think they're within, when this body decided in 2020 to allow them to do it, the assessment was, well, they're going to take up this much of the infrastructure. And our point is, is that we're not taking up any more than we were then.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Excuse me, you you do believe in continuous learning?
I'm sorry, Mr.
Just a question because your points were made. I just want to know, do you believe in continuous learning? Get smarter. Keep dating back to the 2020. I just want to know your thoughts on that.
No, I understand that. And I think that's why I can speak to the let the the staff and and the the folks at SRA speak to that. But the reality is, is when they planned this development, when they purchased this property, they did it on contingency that they could have 200 students. And so I I I get it. There's going to be increased traffic. There's going to be other development along those roads. But they're not asking for more than what they already have. And in other words, my point is, is that in 2020, we gave them an allotment as a county and said, they can have this much. And you're right, it's going to get worse. And that's why I said to them four or five times, and now it's being recorded, and I'm going to play it when they see it in the future. When they come back for more, I will vote to do the improvement. I will do more than that if it takes that at that time because it's it's incumbent on them to be consistent with the representation they're making to you today.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Castle, you're chomping at the bit. Good to see you back here.
But no, I could say.
Well, you got up and walked from the back row up here to the front row. Absolutely.
I live in a PO box. You can't see. I'm Steve Castle. I live at twenty-five Plantation Hills Drive in Evans, Georgia. Oh, yes, to to your point, and also like with with this with the county is, you know, there's several things you're going to look at when you one of them's the traffic volume. One of them would be accident history, and the other thing is, you're not going to do anything without going out there and watching this thing operate. I've done that. I've got videos of it. And what you did see out there was, there's not a lot of impact. There was a couple of times it was some traffic lined up, but never anything backed up onto South Old Bel Air Road. Only issue I did see, and I've spoken to Mr. Dickinson, architect and school, and actually is for the southbound traffic turning right into the development because of the skew of the driveway, there's a column there. Sometimes people have to slow down, especially if somebody's trying to turn turn out. They have to slow down to such a point that that does impact a little bit of how people are able to, they're turned left, waiting on them turning in and out. Now, the manuals are great. There's a lot of volume warrants out there. Testament to the difficulty on trying to figure out how to do a school, especially as these different kind of schools come out. You start talking about school buses, and this doesn't have school buses. Private school, you have charter schools. Go through the Institute of Transportation Engineers, kind of, probably they give you ways to project traffic. Well, there's a very limited data on these type of schools because it's kind of a new thing. Relatively. But as as you look at these things, and whether it be Ash Toe or whether it be GDOT or where it be, some of the things that they they really point to, I mean, the MUTCD, Bible of Transportation, always engineering judgment. Field conditions dictate guideline to go out there and look, but then they say, what what does your your judgment say? I looked out there. I didn't see an issue. If I increase the traffic, even I felt like I even tripled the traffic from a level surface standpoint. Now, does that? I felt like I looked at a typical day. There was no accidents, pretty clear weather. Now, you know, law of infinite probability is going to dictate that something may happen out there. That's going to change that. Like if I flip 100 pennies, there is a probability all of them land up on heads. But for a typical day, about average. I didn't see anything out there that would say, all right, this thing definitely needs it. My first instinct was it was going to. The other issue outside of just the operation of it is the constructibility of this thing. There there is a significant drop off on the on the east side. Putting this lane in would not be an easy task. I have a little creek there. Whether they could get it within existing real right away, you start looking into third-party reliance on whether they could even acquire property without. Got some of those issues. But I I was actually a little bit surprised at it at how efficiently South Old Bel Air Road is going. It does seem that it's splits at some point. Some, we're in that area where it's split. Some goes down towards Bella Road, some goes up towards Columbia Road. Majority of the traffic to that we saw from here was coming from Columbia Road. Seventy-five percent of it. Not shocking, but very little turned left in there. I mean, you you talk about peak hours. As I said, there is a peaking characteristics when that within that hour. All my rain, my monthly rain in one day does that. Where that other stuff comes in. But even during those periods, the time I didn't see was beyond the norm. Oh, my gosh, this happened because in in addition to that, you would look at Georgia DOT maintains traffic data for or accident data for the state and any and any intersection, tell you what's happened out there for the last eight years. Accident history within this area. One at Mural Lake Drive, it was a rear end. Seemed like it was caused by, I recall right. Traction issue. But I don't see side distance.
Now, so you mentioned Mural Lake is, have y'all looked at any anything that would involve changing the traffic circulation and include Mural Lake? Come up with some kind of a of a curb cut there and 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 change the traffic pattern entirely?
I mean, that that's something that they'd have to look at. I wasn't.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know. You know, a lot of, some of these subdivisions have protective easements that allow that disallow some sort of access through their along around main roads. I don't know what's particularly for Mural Lake. I would actually assume that it probably did have one, but that it, this was an existing facility. Then the skew of the driveway, I will say, does does cause an issue. Right turns, they almost have to come to a stop if somebody's a recommendation. There's that column, fix the drainage thing that was right there. Drainage structure is kind of right there, and that's that way. Lot more bang for your buck.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so I know we've got several folks. How many folks are going to come speak tonight? Okay, so yes, ma'am, please come first. Give us your name and home address.
Mary Beth Burns, and my address is fifteen eighty-nine River Island Parkway in Evans. I am the head of school of Savannah River Academy, and I want to tell you a little bit about our school and also ask for your support as we work to provide the best possible educational experience for our students. We are an independent, private school that serves students from preschool through eighth grade. Have no plans to have a high school or grow past 200 students that we were approved for in. We also have hybrid models, so not all of our kids come and leave at the same time as you might see traditional school. Our educational model is different than most schools because we focus on the needs of each individual student. Our methods are hands-on, inquiry-based, and project-driven. We have a class size of more, no more than 12 students so that we can give each student the attention they deserve. Twenty-five percent of our students are in our dyslexia program. Dyslexia is a specific learning disability that affects reading, writing, and spelling. The good news is that dyslexia is treatable and that children with dyslexia are very smart and capable and creative, but need to be taught in a different, more systematic way. The bad news is that what they need is several hours of one-on-one tutoring. What that means to us as a school is that we need more classrooms to accommodate one child and one tutor at a time. Adding space doesn't mean we want to grow past the 200 students we have always been approved for. Want enough rooms to accommodate the proper tutoring of our dyslexia students. SRA is the only school. SRA is the only school in the CSRA with a comprehensive dyslexia program, so these students have nowhere else to go to get the services they need in a school setting. This year, our morning drop-off time is from 8:00 to 8:30, and pickup is either at 1:00 or any time between 3:30 and 6:00. Next year, our morning drop-off window will be much longer. We will offer before-school care beginning at 7:00, and our early childhood students may be dropped off at 9:00 o'clock instead of the normal 8:00 to 8:30 window, so our overall drop-off window will increase from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. without increasing the number of students. Pickup times will remain at 1:00, and then a window between 3:30 and 6:00 p.m. When we came before this commission in November of 2021, you approved our request, yet the Board of Commissioners only approved our new buildings with the addition of a left-turn lane. This extraordinarily expensive condition, has been estimated to be between $200,000 and $300,000, was an unwelcome surprise to our little school. If we had $300,000 extra dollars, we would spend 100% of that money directly on our students. Again, we're not asking to increase the projected enrollment, only to add more space and better space to improve the experience for our students and to provide rooms for our dyslexia students. We always want to remain a small family school. We're here today to ask you to support our building project and to help us do what's best for our school, our families, and most importantly, our students. Approve our request without the condition of the left-turn lane.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, who's next? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and give us your name and home address.
But apparently, the line was shorter than I thought, so.
Name and home address, please.
Jennifer Vigor, 5443 Kaioke Springs Drive. And as of last year, I probably was the largest shareholder in this little nonprofit with four kids at the school, but this year, I only have three. So, I can speak to your question, though, about traffic, as I am there every morning and afternoon. I, my oldest has decided he wants to play lacrosse, so he has been relocated to Greenbrier Middle, where I can also speak to that traffic problem there, but I'll stick to SRA for today, in that there is not a traffic problem. I know, from a parent perspective, you know, safety is always a concern. I'm also a real estate broker, though, and I spoke at length with Will about this particular project of, I have clients that live in the neighborhood and down the street and in that particular area, and knowing that, you know, every change, everything that's done in a community, from a development standpoint, you know, development is that, that four-letter word that nobody that lives in the area wants to hear, especially not out in our Appleen area. But from a parent's standpoint, I've been so impressed by this school. I helped them secure this building back in 2020. We came before this panel and got approval for those 200 kids. I think it's been clearly stated before, we're not asking for additional enrollment. Further, you know, this is a property that is zoned, or, you know, the CO from the Fire Marshal is far in excess of that. And when the property was purchased, one of the things on the property is, there was already a foundation that had been previously poured by the, I believe it was the church that was there initially, so there was already expansion plans in process for that. We had discussed, even prior to that, I mean, I think this is the second time we've been here for this particular property, but Savannah River is not a stranger to the planning and zoning, and we have, I think, been very good and responsible with, working within the county guidelines. So getting to this point has been extremely discouraging, knowing that, as somebody who I do hate traffic, and I can tell you, you know, traffic is obviously something that we're not allowed to talk about in Columbia County, but, you know, that's one of the benefits of growth. But from the county's perspective, or from the school's perspective, nothing has changed. You know, as Ms. Burns mentioned, we're looking to expand the space offering. COVID obviously changed a lot of the way things are done and the spacing requirements, but the school, when it was purchased, it was very clear that we would be expanding the footprint. So, you know, to come before now and have these additional extremely cumbersome and really unnecessary expenses added to the expansion process here, you know, this, we're also a nonprofit, I can tell you, if there's an extra $300,000, I'm going to be looking for a tuition discount, no, I'm kidding. But when you, when you get down to it, I will say, it came as a huge shock. I know that there's a lot of things, and have met with Scott and Will in the past on different projects, and roads are obviously a big thing for Columbia County, but this one was a little bit of a shock, because this was something that, the scope of the project here has not changed. You know, just two years ago, we were here.
Ms. Vigor, I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap it up, so we can ask a lot of folks.
That was, that was it. I'm the parent, and also the one that, I mean, I've been here since the beginning, and so now that the request has changed, we would just ask that y'all support our expansion without that left and right turn lane.
The reason I brought up about the traffic, my daughter lives in Rose Hill, right around the corner, and the grammar school is right outside of that entrance.
Yes.
And I've been through there with awful traffic numerous times, when schools letting in and out.
I also travel that traffic after I drop off. Yeah, and, and so I think, you know, to the point, I understand that there's GDOT requirements, our school does not have buses. I can tell you even, you know, there's, there's three children that show up right at 8:30 every day, so there's definitely not a concentrated span, and I, you know, for the number of people that are coming in, I never wait to turn out when I'm leaving, I never wait to turn in, and I frequently will turn right and go out through some of the other school districts, and I do see the traffic. But I do think that, you know, realizing that this is not your typical school, and we don't have typical traffic patterns.
Thank you, ma'am.
What is enrollment right now?
I know there's at least three. 115, we currently have 115.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Chairman. My name is Samuel Mellor, 3235 Winingwood Place, Augusta. Y'all are lucky you get to hear from two lawyers this evening. I am a parent of two SRA students, and I am also employee at the Augusta Law Department, where I advise the Richmond County Planning Commission, sort of your equivalent there. But I wanted to talk to you tonight about fairness and precedent. Precedent is fairness, is the idea that like treats like, that what you've done before, you'll do again. It's about trust to the community, and it's about independence and faith in this body. Now, when the staff came to you back in November, they recommended that you use the Project Access Improvement Guide, that is the law in Columbia County. And according to that, there would be no left-turn lane. And that staff concludes and concedes, and conceded back then. But now, they've shown you a GDOT program that is not the law in this county, that is not what staff recommended back then. The traffic is the same, treat like alike for fairness and for precedent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
I'm Katie King, I live at 724 Mural Lake Court, so I've seen my house on screen a few times. So I'm here to speak as a neighbor, and I've been in that house since October of 2016, so we've been the neighbor of SRA since they've moved in after Evans Christian Academy. And speaking from, you know, traffic patterns perspective, also not an engineer, but do drive this path often, and typically, I'll turn left out of the Mural Lake neighborhood and right past the school on my way to work. I've never had any issues, not had any traffic pattern problems going to and from, and then my schedule too will vary outside of it, so typically, I'm driving to work between 8:00 and 8:30, but I also come back and forth from downtown, back to my neighborhood throughout the day, and generally speaking, have not had any issues. I do have issues in other areas, this is just not one of them. That's, you know, more or less kind of where I'm coming from here. They've been great neighbors, I'm kind of happy to have a school in the neighborhood from the perspective of, really, we hear kids playing outside, it's a really bright spot in the neighborhood overall, and they've been good neighbors, happy to have them, and I feel even a little bit safer there in some cases, because we've got Columbia County police officers that will park in there after school hours, and that being so close to my house is nice, and I think in some ways, might be slowing down the traffic on that road a bit, because people are starting to learn that that's a popular, popular spot for hiding. So, that's kind of my perspective as a neighbor.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular resoning? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. We could have your name and home address.
Crystal Page, at 4604 Country Meadows Lane, and I'm about 0.6 miles from, from the school, but I'm just here, I'm not a parent, I do live in the area, but I'm here just to support the, the work that they do. I know you've heard of the good work that they do. I was asked to speak to their students about four years ago on their career day. I do work for a judge, and I was there to tell them, even though they were little children, about, about being good kids, so that they don't end up in the wrong place. I was so impressed with some of the kids wanted to come and sit in my lap, just really good kids, they have a really good staff, and I'm just here to support and just ask that you not impose this undue financial burden to this, to this wonderful school, and I think that they're doing a great job, and I'm just here in support of them.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir, Mr. Schlotter. Anybody else over here? All right, we'll end with Mr. Schlotter.
Matt Schlotter, Deputy County Manager. I just wanted to kind of wrap up, address some of the concerns I've heard tonight. I do appreciate y'all coming out, this is great, we can have this, this open dialogue, so, just want to point out a couple of things that were spoken from both sides. First, I'll go back to Mr. Castle's traffic study, just one of his words, these are his words. From these evaluations, it was found that only the future morning peak hour had the volume of left-turning vehicles indicating the potential need for a left-turn lane. That's what we're talking about, morning traffic, potential need for a left-turn lane. His words, not mine. It goes on to say in the next paragraph, however, it would be recommended to continue to monitor this intersection in the future to ensure that the safety of the driveway operation continues in the future, or if future corrective action may be warranted. It may need it, what are you saying? How do we monitor? If, if we don't take action now, when do we take action? We definitely are not going to go back and knock on their door in two years and say, hey, glad you're doing well, go build a left-turn lane. We would never do that. Want to throw that out, his words. One of the things that was said is our original condition that y'all voted on, said that we were to follow our, our law, as he held up. As Mr. Titus stated earlier, it clearly says in there, regardless of what the study says, the county may require left-turn lane. The Board of Commissioners took that out of staff's hands and said, you will do this. We're having this meeting tonight because the commission made that condition. If they would not have done that, it had been Mr. Titus and Mr. Castle in a room discussing this amongst themselves, you wouldn't be here. So the commission made that condition to take that out of the closed doors and make it public, you will do this. Excuse me. I've heard several times, nothing has changed, but I also heard them say, we've changed our intake times. They're a, they're a private school, they can, they can change their schedule how they feel. That change could impact traffic, but that impact would be, we don't know, but it could happen. The 2020 plan that they keep referring, we've stated it, I just want to make it very clear, that was a minor revision, the Board of Commissioners did not see that plan, that plan stopped with you. This was a major revision, which is why the Board of Commissioners weighed in on it. Just want to make that clear to everybody. This is a change, new bill has been added. I understand the limit has not changed, with the 200 students. I understand they're asking to change that, but they are asking to change the footprint, therefore, it's a major revision, which is why the board not weighed in.
Mr. Schlotter, hypothetical question. So, we've got traffic conditions that Mr. Titus came up, recommendation she's making out with 115 students. I believe that's what you said the current enrollment was, 115? So, what can we expect if that enrollment increases to 200?
I'd ask Mr. Castle to answer that question, it's his study, I don't want to put words in his mouth.
Yeah, we, the enrollment, my understanding of the day that I did the traffic counts out there was 117, but my study's based on, I, I increased that up to 200. Basically, I took, took the traffic, it was out there.
It's a worst case.
Yeah, from, based, based on the 117, came up with a traffic factor from that, and increased, increased everything up to 200. Just for clarification on that, you know, this, this study's a snapshot in time, and that's why, you know, the words I put in there is, if something changes out here, basically, if they stop using a school, where they increase it. I don't see any problem with 200, but always kind of have that in there, nothing's absolute.
All right, thank you, sir.
Every year, their student population changes, maybe not by numbers, but they, they move students on to other schools, or they, they take on new, I'm not sure what grades you're doing, K through eight?
Eight.
But every year, they have a new student body. Distribution of traffic could change from year to year. I understand Mr. Castle said it was, the split was, but that might change next year, we just don't know. That's, that's one of the hard things about doing a traffic study, like Mr. Castle just pointed out, it's a snapshot in time. He looked at it that day, that hour, that, that point in time, the world could be different. Just things to think about, just, that's kind of where staff came from with their recommendations, just wanted you to hear those, those thoughts of why we did make that change. I say we, the Board of Commissioners did make the change, not staff. Do we have to answer any questions?
You know, a wonder, you know, as opposed to a turn lane, I noticed some of the county solutions to, to, to traffic back stuff have been pullarounds, where you had, came in and you paved areas on the curb or on the median, so you could, you could actually pull around cars that were stopped to take a left. Is that a reasonable option for, for this situation?
It could be, again, I don't, I don't, not been out there on the ground looking at that option, so I couldn't answer that question on the fly, but it's definitely something we can look at between now and Tuesdays when this goes in front of the board, it's absolutely something we can look at.
Y'all have any questions? All right, thank you, sir. With that, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove RZ 22-03, excuse me, -01 change of conditions.
Do it here a second. All right, gentlemen, any discussion? Okay, all in favor to disapprove? All in favor to approve? Okay, the motion to disapprove fails, the motion is approved. We'll go to our next item. If I can get to the agenda. All right, Mr. Butler, file RZ 220302.
Thank you, this is a request for a rezoning from R2 to M1, property off South Old Bel Air Road, currently vacant, the requested, or the proposed use is for office warehouse. Those locations of the property, you'll notice this property we saw back in January, this is the same owner of the property, they do intend to combine these parcels, we will be seeing a variance for this parcel as well here in a moment, but again, property here as well. It currently is zone R2, you have property to the south, west, and north is zone R2, you have some AR, again, owned by the county, and some M1 to the east, and they also have that little strip that we kind of talked about last time, that's zone R2, where their access is. Those are the aerial view of the property, and the platte of the property. So one of the things from a fore, the access to this comes through, basically from South Old Bel Air Road through this proposed dirt road, then it goes again through this easement, through this property as well. Again, they do intend to combine these properties. Again, they do intend to combine these properties. We'll see here in a moment, we're going to have very similar conditions to the variance from before, but also when this came through for a rezoning back in the early 2000s, there was a condition for the driveway to be paved. We're carrying over that condition again with the applicant does intend to combine these parcels in the future. Again, shows flow plan on the property. We don't have a concept plan. This go around, again, they intend to combine the properties. We do kind of see with the flow plane, you're likely going to have your development more focused up here, perhaps a little bit at the back. But again, with the flow plane on the property, we're going to be pushing everything more towards the east, towards, again, the existing parcels that have already been rezoned. In terms of future land use, which I apparently didn't put in there, it is within the residential, are the neighborhoods' character area. The property to the east is a part of the activity center. Again, we did put within Vision 2035 the ability to kind of take that existing activity center and move it over to this property. Again, makes perfect sense here. They intend to combine these parcels. So in this situation, staff is comfortable with kind of allowing that activity center to move further over to the west. Overall, staff is agreeing with approval of the following condition. Again, carried over from the rezoning before, back in the early 2000s. Access road of South Bel Air Road must be paved to a width of at least 20 feet from South Bel Air Road to, at a minimum, the parking lot of the proposed development. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Mr. and Ms. Journey, would you all like to add anything? All right. Thank you, sir. Yep, that's fine. Do you have a question?
The pavement of the road, is that going to include improving that driveway off Old South Bel Air?
Yeah, yeah. So you can go back to the flat. Yeah, so basically, you'd be improving it all the way back. If you were to develop that parcel first, again, if they develop the front parcel first, and yeah, it'll only go to that portion, then it'll extend.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition RZ 220302, rezoning from R2 to M1 for tax map 074C, parcel 009 located off Old South Bel Air Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Approved, passes 5-0. Mr. Butler will stay with you for the companion variance filed VA 220302.
Thanks for the request for variances. Section 98 lists a lot of structure requirements. NASH 139 buffers and screening to reduce building setbacks and buffers on the property. Again, very familiar property. We've seen it very recently, off of South Old Bel Air Road. And currently is owned R2, adjacent properties as well, aerial view of the property, also the platte of the property, and the flow plan on the property itself. So again, similar to the previous variance that we looked at back in January, you do have lots of flow plane on this side, which is gonna... You're not going to be developing close to these buffers anyway, but there is some issue of this parcel here and here, again, they're both owned R2. The one to the south, that's a trailer park, non-reforming use, it's been there forever. It may actually have a conditional use. We're kind of going to see if we can find a needle in a haystack for that thing, but there is some literature that may have been from around the time of Mr. Dempsey's tenure as commission that may have given a conditional use to that.
We've got another problem of ours we're dealing with.
He might have been involved with it. It's possible.
All the things in the past you can blame on me.
I actually approve this one, anyway. So again, the request for the variance is to both the setback, or to the building setbacks and the buffers. Again, we do have the buffer, the structural buffer is waived against these three property lines. Again, if they're combined, you're not going to have one between these two properties anyway. This is your access, oops, this is your access, but it is owned R2. But again, doesn't make sense to really have a buffer against your access. On the south side, we have reduced it down to 10 feet. Again, not a lot of, this is very far away, these, all these mobile homes down here from this development. Shouldn't really be an issue. The reduction down to 10 feet will keep it in line with, if they do have a use that does have outdoor storage, it will be able to meet that requirement. So again, staff recommends approval of the following conditions. Building setbacks are reduced to 10 feet. Structural buffers are waived against the ones that I showed you. Again, were required. You do have NASH 147, will be required and specified in that section. And then again, reduce down to 10 feet adjacent to all other property lines. Again, carrying over similar condition from before in cases is, or since this is supposed to be combined together. Do a photometric plan will be required at site plan review, and then also the dumpsters will be picked up in the hours of 8:00 AM and 11:00 PM. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Have y'all got anything you'd like to add? All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition filed VA 220302, variances to reduce setbacks and buffers for tax map 074C, parcel 009 located off Old South Bel Air Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved, passes 5-0. Our final public hearing for the evening. Mr. Butler will stay with you, file VA 220301.
Thanks for the request to reduce our variance to Section 953 lists a lot of structure requirements. Reduce building setbacks, property located at 5727 Old Augusta Highway. This shows location of the property on the north side of Old Augusta Highway. Everything around it is owned RA. You do have some S1 over here and a C2, but again, that's across the railroad tracks over on Gordon Highway. Those aerial view of the property. We're dealing with the house, and then we're also addressing some of these agricultural buildings as well as part of that request. This shows the platte of the property and the house location. So again, with, so the house itself from GIS says it was built back in 1947. I would agree with that assessment. It may actually be a little older than that. That is before zoning existed in Columbia County. So again, they weren't building any sort of setbacks at that time. They were just kind of building where they pleased on their property. So because of that, the property is, or the house is about 67 feet away from the center line of Old Augusta Highway. With the current zoning, that would be required to be a 90-foot setback from the center line. So the house cannot meet this. The reason that we're here tonight as well is they are looking to put an addition on the house for, to have an additional room at the back of the house. Those existing sites, again, showing the house itself, and also some of the agricultural buildings on the property, and the house plans for the new addition on the back of the property itself. Again, the house has been existing since before zoning. Doesn't really make sense to move it at this point with the existing agricultural buildings. One of the things that's a little different, typically, we're going to talk about, you know, we're going to allow them to stay or do whatever with that. The Paul Scarborough has, does have a condition that says that they're altered or renovated or repaired or rebuilt for any reason, that has to be brought to building code. Part of that is that they're not occupied, but he does want to be able to have the ability to basically go in there and make sure they are safe in some respects. And also, again, typical with any variance, we're not waiving the request for, or not changing setbacks for any future buildings on the site. Again, staff does recommend approval with those conditions. That includes staff recommendation.
Any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add? All right. Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions filed VA 220301, variance to reduce setbacks at 5727 Old Augusta Highway.
Do it here a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Have no legal matters? Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
Comments.
Okay. Have any public comments? What little public we've got left? All right. Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor to adjourn? 7:19. Next meeting, March 17th, at 6:00 PM in these chambers. 2-1 tonight.